...
Roll call, please.
Counselor Campanelli. Counselor Evans.
Here.
Mayor Kozinski.
Here.
Counselor Lottie.
Here.
Counselor Paynessa.
Here.
Counselor Rolfe.
Here.
And Counselor Russell.
Here.
You have a call on me here.
Great, thank you. And I also will apologize up front, I have some allergies here with the pollen lately, so hopefully I get through without losing my voice. The first thing we have is a presentation of a proclamation that I'd like to do for... It is the... Well, I'll come up and read it, you guys are here, yes, we held it off for tonight last time, so I appreciate you being here. Come on. I'll read the proclamation.
Okay.
Alright, thanks for being here. Proclamation, "Whereas the Town of Berlin includes a community of older Americans who deserve recognition for their contributions to our nation, and whereas the Town of Berlin recognizes the older adults that are trailblazers advocating for themselves, their peers, and their communities, paving the way for future generations, and whereas the Town of Berlin is committed to raising awareness about issues facing older Americans and helping all individuals to thrive in communities of their choice for as long as possible, and whereas we appreciate the value of inclusion and support in helping older adults successfully contribute to and benefit from their communities, and whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by promoting and engaging activity, wellness, and social involvement, emphasizing home and community-based services and support independent living, and by ensuring community members can benefit from the contributions and experience of older adults. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Mark Kozinski, do hereby proclaim May 2016 as Older Americans' Month in Berlin, Connecticut. I encourage all citizens to take time this month to acknowledge older adults and the people who serve them as powerful and vital individuals who contribute greatly to our community. Ain't that true? Alright, so if you'd like to... So, thanks for being here. I give you the... Thank you. Thank you. How you doing, Barbara? Yeah, if you want to say something? No? No words for the occasion? Yes, be my guest.
Good evening, I'm Tina Doyle, I'm the Director of the Berlin Senior Center, and with me is Barbara Gombats, who is our Chairperson for the Commission on Aging, and I just wanted to thank the mayor and the town council and our town manager for your support in recognizing our older Americans in our community, and for their contribution through volunteering for different boards and commissions, and for their support of local organizations and of the senior center. And it is my goal as Director to educate, enrich, and empower our seniors with the programs and services that we offer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is our audience of citizens. Do we have anybody that would like to speak now? Is your chance to come up and anything you'd want to talk to or want the council to hear about? Now is your time. Alright, seeing no one, close that portion of the meeting, and we will now go into our meeting agenda, and we will start, first of all, with the consent agenda. We've all had our minutes and have reviewed this, so unless we can take a motion to approve all the items together on the consent agenda?
Sure. I move to authorize the Historic District Commission in conjunction with the Friends of the Worthington Meeting House to apply for the... Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I take all that back.
Well, we're all off tonight a little bit, that's alright.
I move to accept the five items on the consent agenda as written here before us.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Excuse me, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Alright, on to our... On to our new business. Denise, what do we have, number... Topic number one?
Yes, this is the authorization, actually, the Historic District Commission in conjunction with the Friends of the Worthington Meeting House would like to apply for a new grant of up to $10,000 to assist the grant with some planning, including design, development of architectural plans. The prior plans that they had gotten were conceptual only, and they were not detailed enough to be used with other grant applications that may come down from either the state or other organizations. The group is now working with someone from the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation. He is encouraging them to apply for this grant. It is a matching grant, however, he feels that this grant could be matched by another grant, as they are now a certified local government, so that the designation would allow them to apply for both of the grants. Amy Presler from the Historic District Commission is here, if there are any questions, but this is authorization for them to apply for the grants.
Okay, great, thank you. That's great, we can get something going there, that would be wonderful. Do we have a motion on this?
Okay, I'll start again. Move to authorize the Historic District Commission in conjunction with the Friends of the Worthington Meeting House to apply for the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation's HP Tag Pre-Development Historic Preservation Technical Assistant Grant in the amount of $10,000, and the State Department of Economic Development, Community Development, State Historic Preservation Offices Certified Local Government Grant in an amount up to $10,000, a total of $20,000 in grants. The CLG grant would be used to match the HP Tag.
Okay, great, we have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, I just want to interject again, appreciate Historic District Commissioner Amy Presler being here this evening, and behind the scenes also Lorraine Stub and her efforts with the Friends of the Worthington Meeting House, and I just have to speak up because it's a little near and dear to me and just down the street, so we're really looking forward to some opportunities here with some construction plans, and looking forward, hopefully that this will work well on the grant and will go smoothly. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great. Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, number two.
The town did a recent debt issuance, and during that time, we viewed the existing debt with the financial advisor, Phoenix Advisors, and the Phoenix staff has advised the town that there may be an opportunity to refund up to $12 million in bonds from prior authorizations in 2009 and 2011. This could result in substantial savings to the town in some of its debt service. Generally, unless it results in about 3% savings, it's not recommended, but this would be almost 4% to 4.5% savings. Jim Ren is here with our advisor, Matt is here, as well as Attorney Fazi, to discuss this, if there are any questions.
Great. Great, you want to tell us a little more before we...
Sure, just a few comments. The bond issues involved here are the 2009 issue, which was for a whole host of projects, among them, the track resurfacing, the animal shelter, roads, open space, the financial software and portable classrooms, and also part of the 2011 issue, which was Pistol Creek, the McGee Air Quality and McGee Roof Projects, the Sherwood Complex, and again, roads. The 2009 issue matures in 2024, and the 2011 issue matures in 2026. So, what this would do would be to refund both of those issues, as I explained in the council item. The proceeds go into escrow and pay off the issue, and the town, as the town manager said, will save between $400,000 and $450,000 over the remaining term of these bonds.
That's great. Thanks.
I also just wanted to make a comment, that this is something that happens when we have good partners to work with, so we have our Bond Counsel, Joe Fazi, we have our financial advisors, Matt Sperdell, Phoenix Advisors, who, without their help, this would not come to light, so this is one of the benefits of having good business partners to work with.
Great. Okay, let me read the... We'll move on to the motion here for now, see if there's any discussion after this. I hereby convene the town council meeting on May 17, 2016, for the $12 million refunding bond resolution. The resolution which is subject of this town council meeting is available and may be obtained at this meeting from the town clerk. Pursuant to Section 7, 370(c) of the General Statutes, the refunding bond resolution is authorized solely by council vote. Is there a motion and a second to read the title of the following proposed resolution and to waive the reading of the remainder incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting? So, get a motion.
Okay. Move to get... This one here?
Right?
I moved to second to read the title of the following proposed resolution and waive the reading of the remainder.
Right, that's the first motion, right? Then we have a need a second on that?
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. So now, that would be the...
The rest of it.
That'd be the second motion.
Okay, move to consider the resolution with respect to the authorization, issuance, and sale of not exceeding $12 million Town of Berlin general obligation refunding bonds, authorizing combining into one issue and making determinations with the refunding bonds any other authorized but unissued bonds of the town, authorizing agreements for the investment of refunding escrow and its reinvestment over its term.
Second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any discussion? Okay, that motion carries. Oh, we need to end, the clerk has to call the roll, I guess, on this, right?
No.
It's okay?
Yep.
Okay, alright, so we don't need to do that, thank you. Alright. Thank you, everyone, thanks a lot. Thanks. Alright. Jim stays there. Yes, Jim, you're up for number three.
So, as we have done in the past, we did a bond sale recently, and as has been the case the last few times, we got very competitive bids on our bonds. We achieved an interest rate of 2.16%, which is actually 70 basis points less than this time last year, which is kind of hard to believe. Among the bond sales of similar type in municipalities in Connecticut in the past six months, that was the lowest rate achieved. In addition to the low rate, we also got $1,2,566.45 in bond premium and $3,159 in note premium. Essentially, the premium is prepaid interest. The IRS requirements, when you get a bond premium, is that it has to be appropriated into debt service. However, the way it will be written into the bond documents is that it will go into debt service, it will create a surplus in debt service, which can then go into fund balance and be used by the council for whatever it so chooses. The timing of this couldn't be better with the state funding loss that we got, the loss in state grants that we got, so the town manager and I have discussed possibly at the second meeting in June, having the council assign at least part of that money to offset the impact of the loss of state funds. Because of the charter provisions, we can't do this without a special town meeting, so tonight's motion is just to set that town meeting, at which time we'll approve it formally.
Okay, great. Excuse me, can we have a motion on that?
Move to set a special town meeting for June 7, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. to obtain approval to appropriate $1,5,725.45 premium on bond and note issuance to other revenue bond premium and issue of 2015 interest expenditure account.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes?
I just want to state again, for the record, how important our bond rating is in things like this. Without the bond rating that we have had over the past couple of years, this wouldn't have been feasible, and without Jim's diligence around our finances, this may just save the town in terms of what happens with the state, so fantastic job, thank you.
Great. Any other comments? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Right, motion carries. Jim, don't go anywhere. On that note, it's a good lead-in. I got this letter, and I didn't... I don't have... Well, you'll see when I read it, we are pleased to notify you that your Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the Fiscal Year that ended June 30, 2015, and this is regarding Jim Ren qualifies for a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. An award for the Certificate of Achievement has been mailed to Jim Ren. I didn't tell you. Did you get that?
Oh, yes.
Okay, good. Alright, I just wanted to make sure. Let me just read a couple more things, because that's a great thing, and we appreciate certainly all your hard work, and it's obviously very important to the town fiscal health. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to the Town of Berlin by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFRA. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to Jim Ren designated by the government as primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning CAFRA. The CAFRA has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, and motivate potential users and users groups to read the CAFRA. The organization that did this is a nonprofit professional association serving 17,500 government finance professionals with offices in Chicago and Washington, D.C. So, Jim, congratulations. Shake your hand.
Thank you.
I don't have a... I want to tell you, I just wanted to surprise you.
I just want to say a few comments. First of all, it's not just me.
I understand that.
I couldn't do this with my...
It's a team.
Without my finance department staff especially, and I'm proud to say that the town has achieved this award for 30 consecutive years.
That's right.
Which is a pretty substantial achievement for the town.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. What do we have here, number four? Topic number four?
The town has entered into a grant agreement with the Connecticut Office of Policy and Management concerning $150,000 Transit Oriented Development Planning Grant. Staff initiated a consultant selection process to work out this grant. Consultant RFP was prepared, seven responses were received, a committee was formed and set up a rating system that included several factors, similar projects, experience with the town, staff expertise, et cetera. Proposals were reviewed, and the committee selected three to interview. They interviewed three firms and chose Civic Moxie as the firm that they wished to go for, co with, for a price not to exceed $150,000 to prepare the Transit Oriented Development Study for the area around the train station.
Okay, great. We have a motion on this?
Move to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with Civic Moxie for a fee of up to $150,000 to prepare a Transit Oriented Development Study for the area around the Berlin train station, with funding provided from the Transit Oriented Development Planning Account.
Second on this?
Second.
Discussion? I just have one question under the discussion section, and maybe, Chris, you can answer it. Just... I thought that, back in my planning and zoning days, didn't we do a whole big study on this whole transit-oriented development? Didn't we... We did a huge project right on it, to study it, and we passed, you know, that's why we enacted it. I just wonder if you know, or maybe you can... And if you don't know, I mean, you can answer me later, but what would be the difference between this, maybe Helen knows, or you know, and what we did? We studied this whole thing ad nauseam before we passed it, obviously, or Attorney Weber, I don't know, I just was curious to... In reading it, I said, we studied this whole way, that's why it came to be, right?
Yeah, I think what this is, is to expand beyond to some degree. This is going to be connecting with some of the local property owners, Berlin Steel, Gosse and DeLu, as well as looking at the general area within a quarter and a half mile walking distance, and essentially, it's going to kind of help us to look at what this potentially could be, as well as helping to bring in private investment, and it happens to be money we got from OPM to do the work.
So, it's a little bit of an expansion of what we did to enact the transit-oriented zone?
Yes, and also to give us the recommendations on what else we might be able to do for either its density or different types of uses in the area, and the firm that we've chosen basically has worked in a number of different areas, other communities, both Connecticut and Massachusetts, and we're very confident that they can help us to really give us a better idea on what this potentially could look like, and there's also a lot of participation from property owners and citizens as well.
Okay. Good.
I mean, it's a continuation of the project and the vision that was started years ago. It's a continuation of the same, and it's consistent with our Plan of Conservation and Development. Really, a great, you know, a great another step, a great next step.
Alright, good. Thank you, both of you, appreciate that. So, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Number five, Denise?
The state has invited the Town of Berlin to apply for a Brownfields Assessment Grant for 73 Woodlawn Road, which is behind the Tascaford. Tascia had... It's the adjacent property behind it that they acquired by foreclosure. I think it was, I know it says 2000, and it leaves it blank, I think it was within the last year or two, and they are now looking to do further exploration, and this grant will go a little farther to help them, because they've already put in monies of their own, but when they take it in foreclosure, they are a little unwilling to continue to just sink monies into the property until they know the extent of the contamination. So, to apply for the assessment grant from the state would be a big help, and it would be a 20% matching grant, but the owner of the property will be providing that match.
Okay. Okay. Motion on this?
Move to authorize the town manager to apply for a Brownfields Assessment Grant from the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development for an assessment of 73 Woodlawn Road in Berlin.
Second on this?
Second.
Discussion? Charlie?
I'm assuming this Woodlawn LLC is the owners of Tascaford, you wanted to say?
It is, yes.
Who did they buy the property from?
They took it in foreclosure.
Took it in foreclosure from...
How can they take it?
Well, it was put up for auction, and they were the successful auction.
So, they bought it from a bank?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And they bought it for $200,000?
I believe so, yes.
And the town appraised it for $900,000?
Okay.
And if the property's cleaned up, I'm assuming the town will appraise it at a similar value again?
Yes.
I'm just confused why our taxpayers are subsidizing to private entities.
At this point, the state has the monies, and we had gone for them. The concern was, we thought from the last monies we'd have, we would have cleanup dollars or an amount. We do not have that. The company we're working with essentially needed to do additional testing, including they had had some vapors coming up into the building, which potentially could be hazardous to employees. But yes, to give you the exact reason why we're paying for it, I don't have an answer. I know the program is there, and we were given the opportunity to apply.
I understand the programs there, I'm just... These are two wealthy private organizations, and to ask our taxpayers to subsidize them to increase the value of the property. I mean, I'm all for getting the property back in the tax rolls and putting people to work there, but, you know, we're asking our taxpayers to put up $150,000 to look at the problem, and God knows what we're going to ask the taxpayers to fund to actually clean up the problem.
Understood. My concern is, is that if we don't find a way to help this, it's going to become a parking lot, and I would rather try to see something happen with jobs and job creation, but I would agree with you. There probably is a better use of the money, but I know that this is the opportunity we have through the program, and that's what we're going for, whether we get it, I don't know, and I know the program right now is taking care of Brownfields, and...
I understand, just it runs me the wrong way to subsidize banks.
Understood.
The federal government already did a good job of that.
No, I understand exactly what you're saying, Counsel Payness.
Actually, that's another good point, if they don't, so, we don't, if we don't get the grant, who's on the hook for it?
If we don't, the next set of the study either would have to be completely done by them, or no study would be done.
Right.
It would be my guess.
And I guess that, I would assume, I don't remember this from my law school days, but I guess, I know with contaminated buildings typically, and maybe Attorney Weber could help me on this, but typically, that pollution runs with the title forever, for whoever owned it before. I'm assuming, my assumption would be that through foreclosure, perhaps it gets erased? I mean, would that be correct?
The prior owners would have some responsibility, but they're usually belly up or gone. The new owner who takes it through foreclosure is protected, otherwise, they wouldn't buy... You'd never have any properties bought. So, they're shielded. I understand, you're talking about the state tax dollars, why should we help these people? But your choice is to let a property sit vacant and contaminated and be useless, as opposed to have... And the state has a policy, you may disagree with it, and that's a state policy, but the state has a policy to fund some of these projects to help towns clean up properties, which there's some benefit to. Whether it outweighs the cost of taxes, I don't know.
But wouldn't the owner of the property be responsible if the previous owner was bankrupt?
No, when you buy through foreclosure, the state makes an exception. If it's a private sale, if I buy it from you privately, I may have some responsibility, you and I both have responsibility, but through the foreclosure process, you're shielded, you have some immunity, otherwise...
So, the bank never took title to the property?
Probably not, the bank, I don't know, I'm guessing.
A particular deal.
The foreclosure...
I just assume once the bank foreclosed, they'd own it, they'd be the owner.
No, typically, what the bank would do is they'd foreclose, and they'd never take title, they'd put it up for sale at an auction, and somebody would buy it for 10 cents on a dollar because of the way it's set up. The bank probably would never take title unless they had a gun to their head, because they don't want to own it.
Okay. No, I mean, you know, that's fine, I mean, but it's, you know, it is sometimes disturbing to see, I mean, I know we have grants, that's... Grants are great, but my state income tax pays for grants, so, you know, it all comes out of our pocket, I guess, somewhere along the way, but if it's, you know, this obviously will help our local business in Berlin, and the owner's going to put up some money as well, I hope we get the grant, so we can move forward with that. So, we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Alright, item number six.
This is to discuss the town attorney position at the original organizational meeting. Newly elected town council extended the existing contract of our Corporation Council, and it has been extended a couple of more times during the deliberations, and this is on for discussion at this point.
Yeah. I don't know what the best way is to do this, Denise, if we, and I meant to ask you earlier, but I wasn't here, unfortunately, but make a motion and then discuss it? If we, you know, pursuant to a decision on our who town council will be? Or just discuss it first, and then make a motion?
I think a motion probably would be...
So, we can discuss it as far as the motion goes? Alright. Okay, so, you know, just to follow up before we have the motion, we did go through a pretty extensive process, took a little bit longer, had a couple of issues with it, so we went through and we interviewed six different firms, including... so we went through and we interviewed six different firms, including Attorney Weber, came down to about three that seemed to be the favorites of the six, and ultimately, decision has reached that, you know, one firm, I'd like to point them as town, as our town attorney. So, if we can get a motion on that, and then we'll definitely have some discussion, and you guys, I sent, right, you guys got the supplemental package that was sent out?
This morning.
Okay, this morning, okay, it went out yesterday, right, I think? Anyway, okay, so if we take a motion on that?
Okay, motion to appoint, and hopefully I get his name right, Ciella and Donofrio LLP is the town attorney from June 1st through the next two years' election, I don't know what that date is, typically it's first council meeting after the election, right?
Seven?
Is that how we do it?
The seventh, I believe it is. The first council meeting, we usually do it, right?
Resident into December.
Of what year?
2017.
Okay, all right, do we have a second on that?
Second.
And discussion, yes?
I have quite a few questions, actually. So, typically when we do bids, we get from the staff similar things to this, a matrix of cost, of what it was that you all were basing your criteria on, and I did not see any of that, so, one, just wanting to know from a cost perspective amongst the sixth, amongst the six, kind of where this firm fell, and then some of the criteria that you all were looking at.
Yeah, and I apologize for that, I thought those costs went out, but maybe that wasn't in the...
We got what you had offered, as well as the RFP, completed RFP.
Okay, so, the cost went out on this one, I believe the cost for this particular contract with this firm would be $115,000 a year.
$116,000, but I have questions on that, because that's a retainer, and then there were some percentages in there for billable hours. I'd like to know what is not included, what is not included in that retainer fee, things like court dates, if someone from the staff calls and they're on the phone for 10 minutes, is that billed as a full hour? So, just trying to get a better understanding of what the actual contract is, because it will not be just $116,000, almost guaranteed.
Right, and that should have gone out with the supplemental, because we went out with the three finalists, and I, but I, all I can say is, you know, what I gave to Kate to put out would have included that.
Do you have that information now, that you can answer those questions?
I don't have it in front of me, what came back from the three, but I thought that actually went out in the packet.
Or I think the individuals...
Mayor, let me help you out, I got a summer here.
Dave probably has it.
Okay, so, the final amount, or the annual amount, that was based on a monthly retainer of 9,500, so that the final amount was $114,000 for the year.
And supplemental, Dave, right, we...
There's billable hours, 10%, 15%, so I guess, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of what is not included in that retainer, where are, where are the hidden costs that maybe weren't available to the public if they had looked at this?
So, they add a little bit more, Mayor?
Yes.
And this was prepared by Mr. Tomlin Adam, our purchasing agent, indicating that 638 hours per year was estimated plus litigation, and that it would be track the hours and credit back any unused hours, which was one of the positive things about the proposal, that would be paid in the retainer, so a credit back as unused hours. It'll include the charter revision through June 14th, plus the 1st of July and 1st of August charter meeting and retainer, and will bill hourly beyond that for that particular aspect of the charter revision. Includes attendance at all council meetings, plus an additional commission meeting per month in the retainer.
So, what is the hourly rate beyond the 698 hours? I know if we don't use that many, we get them back, but if we go above that, do we know what that rate is?
We do, I don't have it in front of me at the moment.
It's in the original packet, which I didn't print out today.
And where did that 698 hours come from?
That was an estimate, that was in the proposal.
And that included court time?
Does not include, litigation was the same with the others.
Yeah, they were all the same on litigation, that was all extra, all those costs were extra.
But we don't know how much that extra is?
Per hour?
Right.
We do, I don't, I don't have it in front of me, I know what the hourly rate would be, and we could also ask Attorney Donofrio too, if we need to answer some of those questions he's here, he could give us probably a better answer than any of us can give.
Maybe, can I ask Mr. Weber something?
Absolutely.
How many hours in court do you think that you spend?
Well, I couldn't answer that off the top of my head, I mean, it varies, some years it's extensive, other years it's, like, there might be a quiet period where I'm not in court at all for a month or so, or six weeks, it's just, it varies, I, it's really hard to estimate.
But if quiet time is not being in court for a month, and then that means, you know, over the course of the year, it's probably, you know, multiple hours, I just, I think it's important that we get a true cost of this, you know, particular firm.
It varies so widely, because you might have revaluation, and you get 18, 20, 30 tax assessment appeals, and they're all at once, and you're, and you have one of your partners in court, like I have one partner that goes to court on those, and some years he's swamped, and other years he doesn't have any, nobody's doing any. Then you might have a big, like, stop and shop generated litigation with appeals and stuff, and we get a lot of, there's a lot of time spent. And then zoning's quiet, things are quiet, there's no tax appeals, but you're doing, you know, a lot of other things, there's always something, but it's hard to predict that. It's a tough target to try and hit, it really is a moving target. Putting a bid in on this is not easy for anyone, I had a little bit of an advantage, but it's not, it's not easy, honestly.
And I noted when we started this bid process, we looked at that, actually, that was the question I had from the very beginning, how do we know exactly what legal, outside legal is costing us? We never could get a real hard figure on that. You know, there was, we looked.
But I think we've been paying a flat fee over the past 11, 12 years, right? We haven't, we haven't been paying extra for court litigation?
No.
So, we did know what we were paying from corporation counsel.
Well, I see we're...
So, can I, can I ask again?
But wait, before we do, I just want to say, we did pay extra, of course, which is not in this bid for a retirement account and a healthcare plan, so we can factor that if we look at costs.
True, I agree, so that's probably like 130, right? So, we'll say that's probably around 130, so...
Well, I don't think we can assume anything, but we'll look at the figures and get the right figures.
Okay, I just, I find that...
You want to be specific, so do I.
We are, you are asking those of us who weren't on the committee to vote on something, and we don't, and we've been accused of this in the past, not providing all the information. So, if I can ask, what other criteria did you use when making this decision? If it wasn't just money, I don't know where he fell?
Yeah.
In the scheme of things, because we didn't get that information?
Right.
So, what was some of the other criteria? What does this firm bring to the table that the others did not?
25 years of legal municipal law, what you, what I sent you should have answered all those questions, if you read it all, that's...
But I'm talking, I didn't see anybody else's, Mayor, the only one I saw was this firm, I'm not saying he's not qualified.
No, no, but I'm saying that was the purpose of the panel to get to this point, that's why not everyone was included on the panel. That I could send you, but we can do that, but I'm just...
All right, I'm just saying, as a council, we asked the staff to provide this information to us, so we can see how they made the decision.
Yeah.
You are now asking us to make the decision when not giving us the same information, that's all, that's all I'm pointing out, and if you had the information today, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, I thought that, I do think that went out to you, I apologize if it didn't get to you, but...
Mayor, may I interject, you know, Mr. Rossel was certainly on that committee with us, he saw the information come across. This is much more than has ever been done for selection of corporation counsel, I think there's been a, certainly transparency to this, and the presentation of what we're looking for, we're looking for something that would be, that would end, so, make it more of a contractual relationship and not retain the benefits and those things that would extend through. We looked at the other criteria that involve their expertise in charter revision, knowing that that was a key factor that was coming up immediately, and certainly there was strength there. We asked candidly each of the candidates their experience in charter revision, and this is one of the things that I felt, and the mayor had pointed out to me too, in our discussions and in our meetings with them, the strength of that particular expertise that they had.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Since my name was used in vain, just let me say that while I attended the meetings, there was no way I was involved with the final decision on who was going to be selected, just, let's make that clear.
Well, that's why we sent the information out, but the final decision will be put to vote, but, you know, I do, I do find it interesting that if all the information didn't get out to you, then, you know, let's, I'll take the blame for that, but I won't take the blame that, I think this process from when I was elected and I asked how we chose corporate counsel, was he was appointed after the election, that was the sum total of how you appointed someone for 12 years. That's why we undertook this process, and I think we, it was a pretty much open and fair process, we took bids, we did everything we should do.
I'm not, I'm not saying...
And if you can get all the information, no, and I agree, we can, we can get you the rest of that information.
And I have no doubt it was open and fair, I just, I just feel like it hasn't been as transparent as it could have been, or should have been.
Based upon the last 12 years, I would consider it extremely transparent, but that's, that's my opinion.
Well, you have the information, I don't.
Yes, I will, if I could, we don't, Dave, do we have that, I know with spreadsheet that, remember the spreadsheet that, I don't know if Jim has it, do you, huh? Not with you?
There was an initial one that, when all the participants were involved, and their areas of expertise, and then we narrowed it down to those that had the strength of the repertoire of the talents and skills that were needed. And then we interviewed those particular individuals, and all that you invited to be, you know, Mr. Ross or myself invited to be part of those presentations and those interviews.
And, you know, before we vote, but this is not anything that any of us take lightly, this is an important change for our town. Certainly when I reviewed everything, and, you know, it came down to probably out of the three, a couple of choices, and it was very difficult, it was really all six of the candidates were extremely well qualified, so any of the six would be fine counsel. But I think if we looked at every criteria, the strength of different backgrounds, I think one of the things I noted with our potential new council is the fact that he did serve on a town council, and that he serves on the, on the school board now in his hometown, and I think that's important, because we're looking at some charter revisions, if they happen or not, whatever, but I just think that adds a, a pretty good perspective to what advice he might give us, and I think the other thing that maybe threw me over to him from other candidates was his background in construction law, specifically school construction law. And I know the construction project is almost over, but as we all know, the bills and the billing and the problems are probably going to exist for another year, or two, or five years, however long that takes to complete everything there. So, I think his background in that, he teaches construction law, so I think that that's what we came down to, to do, so, yes.
Okay, so, based on the information that I don't have, I will be voting no, but I want to explain why. One is, in the information that I saw, I did not see anything that set this firm apart from Weber and Carrier, who have served the town for 12-plus years, just physical location much further away, not significantly, but further away than New Britain, where we could, Bob could be here in five minutes if we needed him to, or Helen could go to his office. And I know that my vote won't have an impact tonight, so, that being said, I wish you well, I have no doubt that you are qualified, and you will, I hope, do the best that you can for this town. But that being said, I really want to take a moment to express my extreme thanks to Weber and Carrier, to Bob, who has gone above and beyond for this town, has gone to bat for us with things like Pistol Creek, VIP, the Broadview Project, many, too many to count, things that weren't newsworthy, but because he got them done and did what needed to be done for this town, not only him, but my carrier, as well as his predecessor, Bill, Bill Weber, and I have worked with him the longest on this council, and he will be greatly missed, he was a fantastic asset to this town, his institutional knowledge of this town, of our charter, of what has occurred over the past 12-plus years can never be replaced. So, just wanted to explain why I will be voting no, and to say, Bob, thank you so much for all you've done.
Okay, we didn't vote yeah, but all right, I mean, I will definitely second, second all of that.
May I just, I have one, a couple of observations.
Sure.
Thank you for those kind words, I appreciate that, I've enjoyed my relationship with Berlin, with all the different people, different council members, staff, it's been a really great experience, personally and professionally. And I, just on the motion, you might want to clarify what that means, if he's starting on June 1st, perhaps you should amend the motion to extend me, because somebody has to, I've got to be in court on Thursday.
Yeah, I was going to make that a second motion to your extension, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're clear, we don't have a gap in the coverage.
Right, no, 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 it was going to, as we discussed, it would continue.
And, and as I told you, Mayor, and I told Denise this, and for all of, everybody's benefit, I'm not going anywhere, I'm in New Britain, I'm right here, I'm a phone call away, I'm an email away, and I already, I met Jeffrey in the parking lot, we were walking in together, and I introduced myself, and I gave him my card, and I told him, there's going to be stuff going on for three months, that something's going to pop up, you won't know where to go, I'm here. If there's something about my background, my knowledge of the institutional nature of the charter, our organization, our staff, I'll help, I'm not going anywhere, I'm going to help Berlin, even without compensation, if somebody has a question, I'll help you. I mean, that's without, without a doubt.
Well, we appreciate that, and I've known you for a long time too, planning and zoning issues, and like I said, the decision does not come lightly, but sometimes I think change is good, and people don't want to hear that, people in Berlin don't want to hear that very often, people in New England don't want to hear that. It's a New England thing, it's a Connecticut thing, it's a Berlin thing, and I think sometimes a different perspective from a different person, as well qualified, but I just think that's important sometimes to do that, Bob, and I know we had, we had this discussion, and this is not, was not easy for me to recommend it, and for anyone to, you know, we all know your background, no doubt about it, but I think sometimes that's a healthy change, so, you know, that's what we came down to. Yes, sir?
I also would like to thank Mr. Weber for his years of service to the town, and want to reiterate, this is not a reflection on his skill or his firm's skill, and I really appreciate the professional way and the way he's handling this and offering to help, it's a great service to the town, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Can I, I have one more thing, and I apologize, I would just like to, who member, I don't know if it's Adam or if it's Denise, but we really keep an eye on what those additional billable hours are, what that, to find out what the true cost is, so if we come back in a year, we can see, were we close, were we way off base, it's just going to be important that we really know what the full cost after a year, this firm is.
Yeah, no.
And I don't know who kind of handles that, if it's Denise, if it's Jim.
Well, we discussed that, that was, I think, some of our discussion in our, even before we interviewed anybody, was as we embark on whoever the town attorney might be, we just make sure we do keep track of that, and we will, and that was something we asked every candidate in the interview, to make sure we know what it's going to cost us, and hopefully going forward, you know, it'll be what it is, I don't, I think we all know that legal cost can't be controlled, we all know that, to a certain extent, but we need to know certainly what we're spending our dollars on. So, yes, of course, we're all on that same wavelength. Okay, any other discussion? You know, it disturbs me that you don't have a couple of things that I thought went out, and, you know, that's on me, I'm not blaming anybody, I thought, you know, maybe I didn't give the right direction, and that does disturb me. But I don't, I don't honestly think, whatever you get, is, you know, I think you have with what I sent you, certainly enough of information, I think we discussed the finances, we discussed Attorney Donofrio's and his firm's background, and how we did have a pretty open discussion amongst the panel, and how we did an RFP, which is something new, it's the first time in 12 years we've done that, so I think we looked at, you know, what's available to us on the outside, and we've come to a pretty fair conclusion. And again, I'm sorry you didn't get every bit of info, and that's on me, I'll take that responsibility, but...
I think my biggest... I think my biggest concern is the hidden cost, just not knowing what that billable hourly rate is. That is concerning to me.
Yeah, we do have that. You know what? Attorney D'Onofrio, let's get the answer to that. Why not? We're in the discussion, why not? He can answer better than anybody.
Good evening, I'm Jeff D'Onofrio. When we submitted our response to the town's RFP, we provided hourly rates, $195 an hour for me, which is about, my commercial rate's 375. So it's, our municipal rates are consistent across Connecticut, except Fairfield County, they're a little higher. And 165 for everybody else in the firm. After we submitted our response to the RFP, we were asked to submit a proposal for a monthly retainer. And my response to the purchasing agent was, in order for me to give you any kind of a meaningful retainer proposal, I need to know what you're buying on an hourly, on an annual basis, on a yearly basis. And the response was between 700 and 800 hours per year. And I said, okay, I'll use 750 hours. Now typically what's excluded from retainers, if you look at municipalities across the state, is litigation, because we can't predict how much time is going to be spent. You know, a typical tax appeal may only take, depending on whether it's commercial or residential, a day or two to try, but you don't know whether the experts are going to be deposed, you don't know whether the assessor's going to be deposed. You just can't predict how much discovery there's going to be and therefore how many hours you're going to spend on litigation. So my question was, on an annual basis, what percentage of that 700 to 800 hours is litigation? The response I got from Mr. Toulon was 10% to 15%. And he indicated it could vary from year to year, higher or lower. So what I then did was I said, all right, I'll use the midpoint of the annual purchase, 750 hours. And I'll deduct, I think I deducted 15% of the hours from that to come up with 638 hours. And then use that at a blended rate, I think it comes out to 170-something dollars an hour, to come up with the $9,500. Then the next set of questions that came had to do with, you know, we're in the midst of charter revision, so what's included? Now, when we submitted our proposal in January?
Yeah, I think so.
And then I came in for an interview in the beginning of March. The expectation was that a decision was going to be made by the middle of March or early April, I forget what the date was. So I had taken a look on your website to see what the schedule for meetings was. So I had no problem saying, you know, I'll include within the retainer all the meetings for the Charter Revision Commission through the dates that you have on the calendar for the town council, actually hearing from the Charter Revision Commission and perhaps taking action next month on their proposals. So in terms of, you know, what's hidden, what's not in there, you know, there's a lot of costs that we don't bill our clients for, we never have, like telephone calls, faxes, postage, mileage, things like that. It's all included in the hourly rate. We don't bill unless you're an out-of-state client and I have to travel to you or something like that. In terms of time, it's going to be litigation and any extensive meeting attendance. You know, we said, we'll come to all the town council meetings, we'll cover the Charter Revision Commission meetings through June and include a meeting in July and a meeting in August. And if you need me to go to an occasional meeting, that's going to be in the retainer. But if you were to say to me, we want you to start going to every building committee meeting, well, that's going to be billed hourly and it's going to be reimbursable from the Office of State Construction Grants as a project administration cost, at whatever your reimbursement rate is for the project. So if you wanted me to start going to every Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, I can't absorb that within the retainer. However, because we weren't really sure how solid that 700 to 800 hour estimate was, what we came up with was, well, we'll track our hours as if we're billing them. Everybody will put their time in, like we do for the other towns that we're on retainer with. And we'll send you the bill every month. So you'll see how many hours we spent. And if it turns out that I overestimated the amount of time, then we'll give you a credit. And if you're spending time outside the retainer, hourly, that'll be used to pay for that time. If it turns out that I underestimated, well then hopefully you're happy with us in December of 2017 and we can have a conversation about whether or not it makes sense for us to increase or hopefully I get nice things said about me, like Attorney Weber did tonight when you choose my successor. So in terms of, you know, we, you know, in terms of what our qualifications are, in our proposal, there was a list of the municipalities, a dozen or so, that we're clearly currently working for. And we said, call all the first selectmen, call the town managers, call the assessors, the purchasing agents, don't listen to anything we say, talk to them about it. And you know, Attorney Weber is obviously very qualified. It's very difficult to choose a lawyer. You know, a lot of towns don't go out to bid because they don't want to have to make these decisions. Most towns don't go out to bid. As a matter of fact, in Fairfield County, nobody goes out to bid, because the idea of trying to distinguish between very qualified firms and very qualified lawyers, everybody brings something different to the table.
Can I ask one more question since you're here?
Absolutely.
In terms of secession planning and getting up to speed, obviously the next couple of months are going to be fairly labor-intensive, I would assume, to get, know everything that's on the books now, kind of get the history. Is that all, that's going to be a lot of hours? Is that going to be included in the retainer, the 9,500?
It won't show up on a bill because we're not, that comes with the territory.
Okay.
I've been, you know, I've been in both situations. I've been a successor and I've been an outgoing town attorney. And you just understand that as a courtesy, as a matter of professional courtesy to your client, if you want the business, you do what you need to do to get up to speed. And when you're on the way out, to the extent that it's possible, you extend that professional courtesy, which Attorney Weber has already extended to me. So when I get to my office tomorrow, I'll email Attorney Weber some dates and we'll get together hopefully this month so I can get an idea in terms of what the hot button items are. And we also talked about the fact that if there's items that he's fairly far along on, such as a zoning matter that he indicated is, I guess, briefed and maybe ready to be argued or about to be briefed, it doesn't make sense. You know, whatever's in the best interest of the town, we'll come back to you and say, these matters should stay with Attorney Weber if it turns out that there are matters that it doesn't make sense to transition to me.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay?
Thanks. Thank you, Attorney D'Onofrio. I'm glad you came up and clarified some of that. That was in all your paperwork we had reviewed, but I certainly didn't have that in the back of my head. I do want to say too, once we take this vote, whatever it may be, you know, we'll talk about some of the stuff you talked about. So any other questions, anything else? Did you get?
I got my answers, thank you.
I'm happy you did because I wanted you to get it before we voted. I wanted you to have it, I'm glad Attorney D'Onofrio gave you that. All right, so all those in favor of the motion on the floor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so moved. Thank you very much, everybody. And now we're going to have a second motion. So, yes, I just want to, and I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't talk to you before me and I meant to. But so I know we talked about an extension before we make the motion, Brendan, to the 31st of May. But I want, and I talked to both of you about it. If, like Attorney D'Onofrio just said, if there's something that is far down the road and after that May 31st extension, you, obviously you've got to put some time in on it. I mean, that would be just, you can bill us for that. I mean, I would never do that to you, obviously. But you had another issue that, remember, we had discussed.
Yeah, yes, and I think I can resolve that. I talked to our office administrator since I talked to you on Friday. And I'm okay, I can figure that out. I have enough time for June 1st to rearrange the health insurance. That's not a big issue.
Yeah, it was a health insurance issue.
Yeah, the health insurance. I was just worried that I didn't have enough time with the short notice from Friday to today to, you know, get some health insurance. I've been waiting to try and do some planning and all of a sudden, but I can handle it, it's not a problem.
Okay, and it should just be pointed out that the new contract does not include inclusion in the pension plan or the health insurance plan. But I also, I was thinking after you said that to me, since you are in the town plan, wouldn't you be able to get the COBRA, is that not applied?
I could, but I can get the plan that my partners, no.
A better deal. Yeah, I got you, okay.
Can I ask a question? Who drafts the new contract?
Well, that's a question that I had as well, which we would, I figured would, I mean, you know, I didn't take any efforts to move forward till we took the vote. So, you know, I wanted to make sure he's voted in. But then, yeah, I don't know, who typically does a contract for us? The attorneys, obviously?
Look, when I started, I don't think they ever did an RFP as far as I can remember in Berlin. They just appointed somebody. I don't, not just in the last 12 years, but in the last 30 years. Forever.
Wow, that's interesting. Boy, being a lawyer, that's interesting, but whatever, it's okay.
And then when I, when we were hired, they asked us to propose a contract and we took the contract from Tim Sullivan and basically tweaked it. And it's a pretty simple contract. And my suggestion is, you know, because there's good faith involved and I'm sure Attorney D'Onofrio has the best intentions, just ask him for his form contract that he used for other towns. He'll give you something, you look at it. Denise is, you know, she's an attorney, you practice law. If you want me to look at it, I will.
Yeah.
But that puts us both in an awkward spot. I think you'll be fine by just having him use a standard contract and.
Yeah, and we have one with you, obviously.
We have a contract, but it's different. It's a lot different than what he probably uses for other towns.
Yeah, well, we'll look at both. We can consolidate it, I can look at it myself.
If you want me to look at it, I'd be happy to. And really, I don't think that there's, I don't think that there's anything that I can foresee that's going to really require my involvement after. In other words, I can pretty much wrap things up. And I know, because most of us are pretty quick studies, I can get Attorney D'Onofrio up to speed on things and I'm there as a resource if he needs it. I think we'll be fine with a couple of weeks, just so I can. I just didn't want to have to pack up overnight tonight and be, you know, have everything on the doorstep tomorrow. But certainly by the 31st, I can have everything in order for him and I'll meet with him.
Yeah, we don't do business that way. But, you know, kudos to you again. It's a very difficult decision. I mean, it's my first time as mayor and, you know, kind of a major decision here, very important for the town. I think, I think personally, everyone has their own opinion, but I lost a lot of sleep over it, but it was very important who we chose and I think we did the best thing for the town. And I think it was a very open process that, you know, just, I think it's worthwhile after a number of years just to see what's out there. And that's sort of what I thought going into it. And I think in the end, I feel the same way. So anyway, that's the end of that. So now we need a motion which would, I guess, extend Attorney Weber to May 31st.
Yeah, just one thing, Mayor. Yeah, and I would concur with proposed agreement that would be consistent with the RFP all the way through all the addendums and clarifications that we sought so that it would be consistent with the proposal received as well as what was requested.
Yeah.
I'm sure that that'll be thorough in that way. And then in any assistance, Mayor, I'd be happy to help review specifically with the financial aspect.
We'll look at the language and we'll throw that in. Start with the standard contract and throw that stuff in there, that's fine.
You actually might be better off having laypeople look at it because if you can understand it, that's better than if you have lawyers drafted.
Yes.
Sometimes, sometimes. So if the layperson understands it and it's clear, that's what you're looking for.
We know how lawyers can be.
Yes. So.
And I would make sure that litigation fee is in there.
Oh, yeah. Well, I think we'll put, we'll put it all together. Whatever, whatever the offer was, that'll all be in there.
Those rates were part of that?
Yeah, we'll put all that in there. Okay. Brendan or whoever?
Part two. Motion to extend the contract with Weber and Carrier LLC until May 31st, 2016.
Okay.
I'll second that, Mayor.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much for this discussion. It was a very, it was a great discussion. Appreciate that. Number seven.
As I had indicated it, I think the last council meeting, there is a townwide walking competition that will be held this June, sponsored by the Central Connecticut Health District. And they are having the kickoff meeting for that on May 25th, a Wednesday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at McGee School Auditorium. And as is policy with the Board of Ed, when an organization uses the facilities, there's a recommendation or they need to have police presence. They don't know how many people will be there, but the estimate is that one police officer should be enough. But the Central Connecticut Health District is seeking a waiver of any and all police fees associated with having a police officer there that evening.
Okay, second.
Didn't make a motion yet.
I'm sorry, motion, geez, I'm ahead of myself, I'm sorry.
Move to approve the request of the Central Connecticut Health District to waive all fees associated with having a Berlin police officer at McGee from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Wednesday, May 25th, 2016.
Second.
I'll second on that, Mayor.
As has been the case for the last five years or four years or so, uh, Saint Paul's School is, or Saint Paul's is applying to take advantage of the Neighborhood Assistance Act, which is a tax credit program run by the Connecticut Department of Revenue Services. Basically, what this entails is that, uh, companies can contribute to nonprofit or municipal entities that are using the funds to make energy-efficient improvements. And Saint Paul's has done their windows in the school as well as lighting, and they are, again, seeking to use this program again this year. And the figures that they have had in the last couple of years are spelled out in the body of the, um, agenda item. They are seeking the support from the council, which is necessary, as well as there needs to be a, um, public hearing set up on Tuesday, June seventh, at seven P.M. to discuss the proposal. I had thought someone from Saint Paul's was going to be here this evening, Ellen, but she may have been tied up somewhere else and she will be here for the public hearing. Uh, and I need to be appointed as the liaison for the program.
All right. Uh, thank you very much, Denise. Uh, we have a motion on this?
Okay. Move to support the propose, the proposal of Saint Paul's School for the two thousand sixteen Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program and approve the setting of a public hearing for Tuesday, June seventh, two thousand sixteen, at seven P.M. to discuss the proposal of Saint Paul's School for the two thousand sixteen Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program to solicit citizen input.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or any discussion? Opposed? I didn't ask that.
We have to do the second.
You have to do the second?
Move to designate Denise M. McNair, Town Manager, the liaison for the town of Berlin to handle all neighborhood assistance matters.
Second.
I second that, Mayor.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, number nine.
As council is aware, uh, four of the five labor contracts on this town side were up for, uh, renegotiation as of June thirtieth of last year. We are, have settled three of them and one is still, uh, underway, being negotiated. These negotiations, especially for one of the bargaining units, has taken a lot longer as this is the first time that this group has had full-fledged negotiations since probably two or three contracts ago. So this is from soup to nuts. Additionally, there have been some rather significant grievances brought by a couple of the bargaining units, uh, which have entailed state mediation. As a consequence, the thirty thousand dollars that has been budgeted for our Labor Council is not enough and we need to have funds moved from the contingency account to cover the next couple of months as well. So we, we tried to, uh, project out how much would be needed for the rest of this month as well as June, and we feel that thirty thousand dollars would be enough to cover us till the end of the fiscal year. There is only one contract that is up for renegotiation for next year, so we'll still have perhaps the one that hasn't settled, which we may have to discuss further as we go along anyway because it may end up in arbitration as, as it looks.
Okay. Um, motion on this?
Sure. Move to transfer thirty thousand dollars to the Corporation Council Outside Legal Expert Account from the contingency account.
Second on that?
Second.
Uh, discussion? Um, I just have one question. So actually, we're talking about legal fees here, pretty apropos for tonight. Um, so that outside legal expert account, I, I guess we would have, and I, I'm not sure, I didn't maybe necessarily see it in the budget line items, and maybe I did and I don't remember, but, um, so obviously from time to time, we've transferred these fees, which obviously are not ever part of Attorney Weber's fees.
Correct. There have been times when there's been conflicts of interest or occasions that we've had to employ other outside counsel for some, it, I, I can think of several that have occurred over the last few years in zoning matters or different matters.
Right.
So, um, that's where the, the funds come from now.
Do they, they all run through that outside legal expert account?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So, and again, if I did see it, I don't recall and I will, hopefully we can, I'd be curious to see that. So, I mean, that, that would actually, because actually just, you know, it's funny, this came up now because, you know, when I was looking at some, I made a couple of calls on, uh, regarding Attorney DeNofrio and I had from, uh, a mayor from another town, he said, "Well, the fees were, you know, much higher than he had quoted us." And I said, "Wow, that's interesting." But, but then, when I looked into it, they said, "No, no, no. That, that, I thought you asked me what, what the legal fees are for the year." And what did it, you know, it was outside counsel, it was labor attorneys.
Bond counsel, yeah.
So, uh, you know, that, we have to, I think, I would like to just, because it's maybe my, my thing as an attorney, but I like to just see all that, you know, with the bond counsel, just so we, we know, like, if there's a figure, I mean, we know the town attorney's one fee, but obviously there's many more fees that we're paying for legal services outside of that particular budget. So, okay, good. Now, that's, uh, some more good stuff.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I know when you all initially went out to bid for town attorney, you talked about, you know, bond, bond attorney and, and, you know, all of this. Are you still labor, are you still planning on doing that or we're just going to go with what we have?
Yeah, I think we decided just to leave what we have, the rest of the, the labor attorney, the bond attorney in place for now.
Okay.
I think that's, that's what, I think we had a little bit of that discussion with all of us there. We just, that we actually, I think we changed, did we? Remember when we resubmitted?
The original RFP, yeah.
The original one did, you're right. But we took all that out when it was resubmitted. Actually, I think it was resubmitted, it was sent out because there was an error, but I think we then, remember then we kind of narrowed down the scope of what the...
But we took advantage of that error and changed the scope of the...
Right. So, yeah, that was, uh, a bit much to take in one discussion. So, all right. So, any other?
Mayor, I was just going to add, it was just that there was a, a date on which it was supposed to be submitted and that wasn't consistent and that was, unfortunately, through, through our agent.
It was a notice issue, right? Or was it too inconsistent dates on the, when they could submit their proposal?
But you're not planning on going forward with separate RFPs for that in the near future?
Personally, I have no plans for it. I don't know, but everyone could speak for themselves on the council if anybody else has to.
I think we can have further conversation with Mr. Wren. I think he's comfortable with the way we are with this particular positions, but, you know, it's always something worth looking at. I don't think it's...
Change is always good.
Out of question, but, um, I don't think there's a definitive right now as whether we will or not.
Okay.
Okay. So, motion on the floor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Number ten.
Um, Counselor Evans and myself, I might add, have been seeking to set up priority meetings with the council to discuss, you know, the, the upcoming schedules of things that this council may wish to focus on. Two dates have been suggested, June twenty-eighth and July twenty-sixth. Kate had recommended scheduling them because then they're considered regular meetings so that the agendas can be changed even at the last minute if necessary, instead of calling them special meetings. And then that way, it limits what can be discussed. So this is to amend this, the town council's original meeting schedule to add two additional meetings to, um, the schedule so that they are regular meetings.
Regular meetings. Um, okay. Um, I see, well, before we even make the move, there's two dates on there. I know that second date is July, you know, end of July. I don't know if that's a, yeah, I don't, I don't know what people's vacation schedule is.
I'm on vacation the following week. That, that one's okay for me.
That one's okay, that one?
I don't know about Kristin.
Okay. Um, how are the rest of us? I, I'm around both those dates. How are we?
No one had gotten back to me when I asked.
That's why I wanted, that's why I wanted to ask, because I knew, I, I didn't want to just pick dates and no one could be there. What's the point? So, what, Dave, are you, you...
I proposed him, so I'm absolutely okay with him.
So you're good with it? So... And Charlie, are you around those two dates? Okay, so, um...
Majority is.
All right. Majority is here. Hopefully Kristin's there. All right, so let's, we'll, we'll do the motion. Again, you know, if we have to change it, we change it. I don't want to do a meeting when no one's here.
Move to amend the town council meeting schedule and add two additional meetings to establish priorities. The meeting dates are Tuesday, June twenty-eighth and Tuesday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen.
Second on that?
Second.
Just any further discussion?
Sorry.
Yes.
At seven o'clock?
Seven.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
At seven P.M.
Amended to seven P.M. All those in favor?
Mayor, just a quick discussion on that, yes. So, input from all of us would be helpful and, and I'd encourage that that, um, you know, it could certainly go to anyone in particular, but certainly if you could send it to Mr. Wren, copy the, the town manager, and, uh, I'll, I'll give you a flavor of what I suggested for at least the first one, is that, uh, we would have our financial advisor be a part of that one. Mr. Wren has already talked with him. Um, I, I don't know if he's firmed up that first meeting and the second, but I believe it was the first. And it will help us understand what I call the principal and interest curve and the impact of particular projects or things that we might want to consider. So the intent would be to marry together the financial aspects of it to the desires of the community that are coming through each of us as a council member and endeavor to get, uh, some of that out early on so you can, uh, look at that and then if that sparks some thoughts on, hey, let's, let's talk about this also. Um, and then the follow-on meeting would help because, you know, we will have vetted a few ideas and some thoughts will help us to talk about it even further. I know we had done this once before as a, kind of a, called it a retreat or something at the time. And unfortunately, at the time, I think we got a little, um, miss, not miss, but, um, some direction we had to take care of at that time, mostly having to do with pool, pools and so forth. So, uh, so that was, uh, that was the intent of why we'd have these and suggested that would be on a Tuesday because if, if we're consistently showing up meetings on Tuesday nights, then it might, might be available to others to come on a Tuesday night also.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Um, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, what are we on here now? So we are, the town manager's report. Denise?
Uh, just a reminder that tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, there is a ceremony at Maple Cemetery for, to honor Jeffrey Casner, Officer Casner. This is, I believe, if it's National Police Week, but this is also done every year in honor of the only officer who was killed in the line of duty for the town of Berlin. So that's tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, Maple Cemetery on Worthington Ridge. That's all I have.
Okay, great. Special committee reports, are there any?
I just want to, sorry. There is a Board of Ethics meeting this week, Thursday at six P.M.
Thursday at six.
Just to go over our new ethics proposed, uh, paperwork with the Ethics Commission.
Okay, great. Uh, good. I'm glad that's proceeding. Oh, Peter, yes?
Um, just, um, I would request that the Blight Subcommittee, and I don't want to embarrass anyone, I know who the chairman is, but I would suggest that we meet and, uh, we have some areas of, of problems in town that require almost immediate attention.
Okay.
I don't think our current, uh, ordinance is sufficient. And Attorney Weber always told me never to speak in specific, so I'm not. And that, I just think it's, uh, we need to put some bite in the, in the ordinance. And whoever's in charge is, would appreciate that we get together and...
All right.
Give our new town attorney...
Something to do.
Something to do.
Something to do.
Easy, easy, Fred.
Easy stuff. Yeah, all right. That's a good idea. Well, if we could, Denise, put that on agenda. Okay. Uh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.